Order. Start with our indication?
Yes.
Yes.
Lord, we thank you for the season where the world recognizes that beautiful day, the beginning of the plan of salvation. What I thank you for the blessings on our community this year, for those that have lived and and your blessing on all that that's taken place for your glory. I pray that you lead this meeting be glorified by all that's done and said. And I pray your protection on everybody as they drive today. Those that are traveling out of town, we ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have any changes to the agenda?
Looks like we will be doing a presentation of plaques under the commission reorganization. I don't know if that counts as officially changing the agenda. We will do a plaque recognizing outgoing commissioner hash under A on commission reorganization, and then we will present a plaque for outgoing mayor Hutchinson under B.
I'm going to approve the agenda as amended.
Second motion by Commissioner Lambert to second by Commissioner Valden to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Proclamations, recognitions, presentations, and commission reorganization.
I received the election results from County Clerk Sheila Toman, and so I will read those now. She has certified them. We have Jay Troy Heartaker, 566 votes, Amy Jackson, 997 votes, and Marsha Wentz, 780 votes. Normally, I read everything, but there was like 20 people that got one vote, and she and I both thought it was interesting that Toy Nosker got one. You can't even spell your own name, Toby.
I did it as a safeguard. I didn't want to run the business again. Thank you.
So the winners are Amy Jackson and Marsha Wentz, and I will administer the oaths now. First, I guess. There. You can do it right here if you want. Raise your hand and repeat. I, Marsha L. Wentz.
I, Marsha L. Wentz.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of City Commissioner.
And faithfully discharge the duties of City Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Same thing. I, Amy Jackson.
I, Amy Jackson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of City Commissioner.
And faithfully discharge the duties of City Commissioner.
So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
So it is with a heavy heart that we say goodbye to our Commissioner Christie Hash tonight. I want to thank you for all of your thoughtful insight and all of the work you've done in the last nine years.
Thank you.
We're also presenting you with a key to the city, so on your many travels, I encourage you to take it. It also is a bottle opener.
Thank you. It's my privilege.
Of course.
It has been my pleasure to work with all of the commissioners that I've worked with, including you guys and the city staff. I'm it's been really just a lot of fun. I've learned a lot. I expected that I would learn a lot. I didn't expect to learn as much as I did, but it was great. And so I thank you all.
You.
Amy, it's your seat. All right. Thank you. I'll read about it in the newspaper. News on the radio. Congratulations. Thank you, guys.
Our next point of business is our annual commission reorganization election of mayor and mayor pro temp. At this point, we entertain a motion for mayor. And Mayor.
I would nominate Chuck Lambert as mayor.
It's been a motion to appoint Chuck Lambert as mayor. In a second, all those in is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Yeah.
At this point, we need to appoint a mayor pro temp.
Make a motion to appoint Marsha Wentz as mayor pro temp. Second.
The move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Valden to appoint Commissioner Wentz as mayor pro temp. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the designation of City Commissioner to the Frank Carlson Library Board. As state statute requires, the mayor is officially appointed as ex officio member to the library board. If memory serves correct, that's the first Tuesday every month, five o'clock. Moving on to designation of City Commissioner to the Cloud Corp Board of Directors.
Make a motion to appoint Commissioner Amy Jackson to the Cloud Corp Board of Directors.
So move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to appoint Commissioner Jackson to the Cloud Corp Board of Directors. Any further discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to Cloud Corp quarterly report.
Thank you for having me. I know that you already have the packet. I did make some copies. Does anyone need a copy? Russell, did you want a copy?
I got one in the packet. Thank you.
Very good. Everybody's good then. So I had planned to kind of cover quarter three, quarter four, since we're basically at the end of quarter four. I have made a lot of community visits since June, when I believe I presented last, or July when I presented last. A lot of the community visits were based on gathering letters and having conversations in support of the housing and the MIH grant. And by the way, congratulations to Amy Lang and the City of Concordia. This is very exciting to have received the grant and the tax credits. So we're very excited to continue to move forward with the City of Concordia and all of the development in the days ahead. So a lot of my community visits were based on having conversations about support for the housing and talking to businesses that they want to expand. They just were not able to expand due to the fact that, number one, they can't get people here that they're looking for because housing is not available. And then, of course, the next thing is childcare, which those are our focus right now for Cloud Corp, is focusing on the housing development, childcare availability. Really have been pushing a lot with the City of Clyde as well, and then entrepreneur, which we're very excited as well. We've had six new startup businesses in Cloud County since I've been the executive director, became the executive director in May. So very exciting times. I'm very excited for the getting the cloud grant application next year. I have had so many conversations this summer, people that are already taking the small business development courses, already preparing, already wanting to start filling out the application. And I do realize we do have to go and talk to the county commissioners, and they have to approve that. But people are very excited for that small business grant that we offer through the office. So I kind of just talked about the next page. We've had five active businesses still submitting invoices since July. We've had a total of $114,663.34 invoices submitted that we've submitted to the county that have been paid out. You guys know about the two development that I spoke about in this report, the housing project, super excited. Cloud Corp has been having conversations with a couple of gentlemen that have experience in working in housing development, and I've continued to have conversations with them, and Cloud Corp is looking forward to moving forward with them and their advice and their assistance as far as the steps that we can benefit from for Cloud Corp and to be able to assist the City of Concordia. Also continuing to work with private infill investors. I we have submitted information to some development companies, already one, they have already moved on to a different community and said they would keep us in mind. I've been contacted again here this week, another company looking to do some development. So just continuing to have conversations and see where we can go. Childcare, we did a really hard push with USD 224, trying to get their school district to start. They just they just could not buy into it, and that's okay. We are still partnered up with Dane Hanson, Childcare Aware, Northwest Kansas EICI, and a group of women. There's three women at Clyde. One of them is the actual childcare provider that is in support of seeing some more childcare development in Clyde. So that's been one push. And then I did get a nice email from Childcare Aware when I was working with Russell to get a he contacted me to do an article for childcare. And Jennifer Bergar had stated that through the efforts of Cloud Corp in this calendar year, that we are doing better than we had been in the past with childcare, which was a good thing to hear. So continuing to push, going to continue to work with Clyde and see if we can't get something somewhere started, hopefully with some individuals that will take the step. Very excited about the entrepreneur YEC challenge that I have scheduled for March. I know I'm already looking ahead, but that's part of this, the third and fourth quarter, and a lot of the preparation and trying to line up a very exciting event. I've decided to partner the YEC challenge with our annual Cloud Corp luncheon, and my attempt is to bring in a keynote speaker. We'll have the challenge out at the fairgrounds in the morning. We're going to set up a trade show booth and invite our luncheon guests to come and visit the young entrepreneurs and visit their services or product that they're wanting to sell and offer a People's Choice Award. So the people that come to the Cloud Corp luncheon will have conversations with the students, vote on the best marketed group of kids. Then the students will sit down and enjoy our luncheon with us. We're going to have three speakers at the luncheon is the plan. We're going to have two business, two local businesses, and then our keynote's going to do a spark of a presentation to hopefully then draw back to the Brown Brand that evening. And we're going to plan to have the award ceremony to open up that evening at the Brown Brand, announcing our YEC challenge winners, and then hoping to draw in all of the different communities in our county to come and see our listen to our speaker that evening, and that will be free to the county to attend and listen to the keynote speaker that we're working to get in. So moving forward, our next steps, assisting the city with the housing, working on the childcare, continuing that throughout the entire county. I've also been having conversations with some other communities, Glasgow especially, about some housing, and been talking with a group of people over there. So excited to see this small spark of a group over in Glasgow trying to get things going. Actively seeking a new assistant for the Cloud Corp in Broadway Plaza. We have had a Broadway Plaza portion covered. Madeline Meyer has been working remotely for me since September 23rd, I believe, and it's been working nicely. Really, the only load that I've been carrying is if anyone comes in, and then I refer them on to do the contract or, you know, any advertising. I refer it on to Madeline. And then we also have another lady, Lisa Blodgett, helping work any events, which right now it slows down, as all of you know, with the weather. So I have some four good candidates. I'm planning to do interviews very soon and hopefully have a new assistant and plaza coordinator named very soon. We are also seeking a new groundskeeper and doing our best to keep up with all that that position requires as well. I did also include in the packet, and I may have given this to you before, but I just included it again. It's just the things that we've been doing since I was announced in May. I'm excited to continue to see what can happen when I'm fully staffed. I know all of you know, it's been quite a year, and I'm excited to see where next year leads. Any questions or any thoughts? Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Moving on to public comments. This is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We would request that you state your name and address, speak respectfully, and limit your comments to three minutes. Moving on to the discussion, excuse me, discussion agenda, the trap neuter release program for feral cats.
Mary Commissioners, our internal official officer, Jody Baker, came to us and presented a challenge and a solution to help address the feral cat problem. And so she's here tonight to kind of present that solution.
Okay, so most of you guys already know me, but this is John Myers. He's with the Have a Heart TNR out of Clifton, and we're here to talk about the stray and feral cat problem in Concordia, because both John and I get calls on a weekly basis with complaints about the stray cats. People are complaining about them being too many cats in their area. The cats are fighting, the cats are spraying, and the cats are being sickly, and the cats are constantly just breeding and creating more cats in their area. So between the both of us, we have a list of at least 20 different areas that we have complaints about already, at least. And colonies of cats can number from just a few if caught early, and we have some that have up to 30 cats or more in their colony. Cats average one to seven kittens per litter, and they can have two to three litters in a year. So something needs to be done to get this slowed down. Even fixing the cats a few at a time could stop hundreds of kittens from being born. In the past, the only option I had with dealing with the cats was to send them to farms, just trapping the problem ones. And it's not the ideal situation, because usually the cats don't survive on the farms, and I don't have any other options. I can't impound them because they're not tame, they're not adoptable, and I don't have enough farmers to take all the cats that there are out there. So that's where using John's program, we can start getting the cats spayed, neutered, and that'll greatly slow down the problems in most of the areas, because the average lifespan of feral cats is like four to eight years, and that's if they make it past the kitten stage. And if the cats are fixed, then they start thinning down in that area. Since I work alone, I don't have the time to contact the people and go set up all the traps and care for them while they're being held and running them back and forth to the vets. So that's where John's program comes in. He will do most of the contacts and setting the traps and taking them to the holding place, and then I'll pick them up and take them to the vet, and he'll pick them back up and keep them overnight until they're woke up and then take them back to their colony. And we've talked to Tall Grass Vet Clinic to see if he would be willing to do that for us, so we can keep it locally, and he's agreed to do the surgeries and the rabies vaccination at the same price as the other vets that John works with in Washington and Waterville. And so that'll save us the trip from having to take them that far all the time. And Tall Grass has agreed to do five cats a week. It's $35 for males and 75 for females, and that will include the surgery and the rabies vaccination. And then they'll tip their ears so that we'll know which ones have been fixed, so we can continue in an area and not just keep getting the same ones. We're asking for to work this program through the shelter by adding $3,000 to the shelter budget to cover the cost of surgeries. John does doesn't get paid for his work. All of his stuff is volunteer, and all the money just goes for the surgeries and vaccinations. And I realize that only covers around 50 cats, but that can average out to stop around 300 new kittens from being added to the to the stray population in just one year. And that's just figuring if 25 of them were females and 25 males. So it could be a lot more than that. But since the breeding seasons will be in high gear as soon as it warms up, that we'd like to start that as soon as possible, so we can start getting some of them fixed right away. And by getting the cats fixed, it'll cut down on this, the breeding and the spraying and the fighting, and it'll make the cats that are fixed a little healthier. And if we come across cats that are tame and adoptable, I'll take those into the shelter, as well as like kittens, you know, that can be adopted. So that'll take them out of the areas. And so this program is just for those feral cats that are not adoptable. And if we can just get them to stop, you know, the breeding and stuff, and let them live out their lives in in that way, then it's less of a nuisance to the citizens, because they're not having all those issues, you know, slows that down, and then it slows the breeding. So John's already been working in Concordia a lot, just out of his own business and out of his own pocket and stuff like that. We would wanted to try to get this going so that we can really get into our colonies and get more fixed at a time. So if you have questions, he probably can answer a lot of that, since that's his deal, and I'm just going to assist him.
John, can you talk a little bit about, I mean, how do they make a decision if you do have a sickly cat? Does the vet recommend euthanizing? Oh, okay. Sorry. So if the if the cat is sick and the vet recommends euthanizing, do you guys make that decision then?
Yes. I've done one cat.
Yeah.
Four years I've been incorporated. Just one.
Just one.
And my met near in Waterville, Nicole Porter. Her maiden name was Nicole Wair.
Oh, yes. Yep. Yeah.
She's got a good one, too.
She is.
I spoke to Dr. Oldwick at Tall Grass.
Great. Thank you.
He talked about, there was a possibility he could take a few of our cats there just using his, you know, his stuff, and maybe we could do eight a week that way, do five out of ours, but because she is from the area that he could use some of that to go on there.
I think it'd be a good idea to do.
You get other grants? Does he give other grants? You get grants?
My organization, the 501(c)(3), I got one grant last year from Bissell Foundation. I applied for quite a few, but they're not easy to get. Last year in Concordia, I helped 69 cats on an organization. There was 21 stray kittens, I think 38 that were trapped and returned, and a few owners surrendered.
Thank you.
So how do you locate these colonies?
Well, a lot of these people, some of the people that have called, they're the ones that are feeding in the areas. And they're like, it's just getting out of hand. We can't do this. You know, there's too many, and we can't feed them, and what do we do? Help us? And so those big colonies, if we can start getting those fixed in that area, you've already got people that will take care of them and feed them, but that'll stop that breeding. And a lot of them, you know, they know the cats that are coming in to eat. So they and plus we'll have ears tipped, but they'll know if another one comes in once you get the colonies fixed, and they can call and go, oh, somebody else is here, you know, and you stay on top of it, you know, you can keep that from growing. And then as they die off, or, you know, I mean, things happen to the strays. I picked up two yesterday that got hit. I mean, you know, they'll they'll start dwindling down. But, yeah, if they just keep breeding like mad, you know, we're just never going to get on top. And there's, you know, I can ride around in the daytime, and I don't really see that many, because feral cats stay hidden a lot, and they'll come out at night, you know, and people will be like, man, this area is just horrible. It's like, really? See them? You know, but but, yeah, they're out there. And some areas are really bad.
How do you make the determination of it as someone's pet versus a feral cat? Or are you just targeting these colonies?
Yeah, well, a lot of them, a lot of them, you can just tell by the looks. I mean, you know, the feral cats are pretty rough looking, and and they're real skittish. And even when I've had people trapping before to get some out, you know, you'll catch one and you can tell. I mean, if it's really sweet and all that, that is, we'll just let those go and stuff. If if we do this, I can always like, if we decide not to just let it go if we're questionable, but it seems kind of tame, I can take it into the shelter because it'd be a tame one. And then we'll post it, you know, and if somebody owns it, then they'll just come get it. And if not, they'll go for adoption. But, yeah.
You guys took my cat this year. Like I was mine.
So if someone needs to keep better control of their cat.
He was a wild man.
Well, it does sound like a good program to get started.
So if we did this, it would run through the general fund, but the budget allocation within Jody's budget is not there. So we would have to basically allow her to overspend her budget, which would in essence pull from reserves, what it would amount to for this year. We talked about it as a pilot. If it goes really well, then build it into the budget for next year.
I'd like to see how it goes.
I don't think Jody asks for much, so I think we need to.
Thank you. Moving on to the action agenda, minutes of the December 7th, 2022 meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the December 7th, 2022 meeting.
Second. So move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Hattatt, sorry, to approve the minutes of the December 7th, 2022 meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to appropriation ordinance number 23.
Quick question on the Mueller company. Is that purchasing more meters? Are we getting more readers?
Yes.
Awesome.
I've been purchasing them for a while, and it's just finally starting to arrive.
Good. That's good. Cool. Very good.
I would move to approve appropriation ordinance number 23.
So move by Commissioner Valden, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve appropriation ordinance number 23. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to Cloud Corp 2023 professional services agreement.
So I was here June 1st, and I had submitted a letter in May about looking at the professional service agreement for the calendar year 2023. The only thing that has changed from then to now is I have Ashley Hutchinson as the mayor, so I'll have to go and change that. But Lucas and Marsha had signed, but that's not a problem. But nothing else has changed according to what I had submitted in June.
I might entertain a motion to approve the Cloud Corp 2023 professional services agreement.
I would move to approve the Cloud Corp 2023 professional services agreement.
I would move to approve the Cloud Corp, twenty twenty-three professional services agreement.
So move by Commissioner Bellton, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the Cloud Corp, two thousand twenty-three professional services agreement. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you. So I will get that re-typed and re-signed and sent over to Amy as soon as possible. Thank you, I appreciate it.
We want a Campbell and Johnson, two thousand twenty-three professional services agreement.
Can I have her budget? Sorry.
You can. Show us the project that we.
No, I present uh, to you a amendment to the agreement from last year. We can renew the agreement for two years and then we have to start over with a new agreement. We, we have an agreement for twenty twenty-one in twenty, or twenty twenty-two. And then going into twenty-three, we can just amend it if nothing changes and we're proposing to leave it the same. That'll be four years that we left at the same rate as what it is now. And it seems to be working fairly well. Most of that, our, our time is spent in estimating, doing historical records, consultation. To the different uh, staff members on their projects, that type of thing. And usually if it gets beyond that, you guys have already appointed a project. We've signed an agreement for that and so the rest of the work will go under that agreement and so it stops going under the monthly. I think this year we're gonna be about a thousand dollars over and that's rough. You know, fairly good and since you have no idea how many hours you might have in a month, so that's, that's ten hours of work. So, so that's pretty good for.
That means there's a lot going on.
Yes, there's always stuff going on. The historical records this year has been more, and when we keep track of that. Uh, the historical records have been entertained more than anything else this last year and we did a lot of estimating during the housing deal. But that, you typically figure you'll do four or five of those a month. Where you guys are looking at projects for the next year about what that's gonna cost you. You know, that, that's figured in, but I think it was one month we had over fourteen historical record searches. Which is, part of that is due to your, the housing. Because you're now wanting to take over some of the hospital ground and nobody knows what's on that ground very well that's around anymore. And so we were digging in historical records that were in the sixties. Trying to find out what they said was there and trying to help out some of the water crew finding valves and stuff like that. Then we found other things besides, so, but that's the advantage of the historical record part. If you guys had our historical records, you'd have to have another room to put them down. So, and I'd be glad to let you have them and dig through them, but. They would, we've been in business since sixty-nine and we were actually in business since sixty-two. And all those records at the chagrin of my office manager, we kept. And make copies of and stored because she keeps telling me we just keep everything. Well, that's true, at least one copy of everything. So we're proposing to leave the agreement as it is from last year, move on into twenty-three and then we'll be back at the end of twenty-three. To re-advise and do a new agreement. Now, rate may stay the same, but it'd be wise to try and keep. The agreements within a two-year period.
And we certainly appreciate your professionalism and your passion for research. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, to authorize the city manager to sign the Campbell and Johnson, twenty twenty-three professional services agreement. For seventeen thousand four hundred dollars.
So move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to authorize the city manager to sign the Campbell and Johnson, two thousand twenty-three professional services agreement. For seventeen thousand four hundred dollars. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
We have a final plat of the Cloud County Community College Tech Building.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, uh, George White is online. And Caesar from the college this. Been working with him, GLBM Architecture, and they have the final plat for the new Cloud County. Tech Center Edition and. You have it in your packets. We have a final plat and a preliminary plat and we also have the signatures and I asked Ken to stick around because I just now realized that. Cloud Corps did, I got the wrong mayor on there, on three copies, so I don't know what we're gonna do. That's why I asked Ken to stick around. Did we just cross out Ashley's name? I mean, it's, you know, I like these documents to look crisp clean. And we waited till the last minute to print them out after we got all the things worked out and so we got that now, so. But anyway, this final plat is a culmination of a couple, three months of work with George and GLBM. Call Valley, the college, what, what they want. And uh, we've got a lot one, block one, Cloud County Tech Center addition now to our city. And uh, along with that, outside of that platted area, and I hope you guys can see that very plain. But the next thing would be the easement for this uh, storm sewer. This is the flatted area that they plan on putting their tech center. We've got a site plan approved for that already, but this part here is out of their flat area and that's our storm drain extension that. Drains this big ditch and they have to move that around and reshape that land to be able to get this to drain right, so they can develop that piece of land. So along with this document to be signed, we also have a separate document for what's outside of that. And I guess I'll stand up for any questions.
Bruno, tell me again what is, uh, it's zone C two, what is?
I think it's C thirty. Restricted commercial, then if it's C two. But colleges are allowed and, and all their accessories are allowed in by everywhere. It's kind of like churches. They're allowed in those natural and. Uh, multi, I mean, they're just. Pretty broad place they can go. The public zoning that we have. We're gonna look at again when we redo the comprehensive plan. The problem with public zoning. Almost every little thing you do has to have a public hearing. You get a sign for the school, you gotta have public hearing. You put a sign up on the tech building, you gotta have public hearing if it's public on. So I, you know, in learning over the twenty years of making this, it's probably better to have the. Colleges on something different than public, so that they can make freer decisions on some of those things. But, yeah, the zoning is fine. That's one of the first things we looked at because we could have went through the zoning change during this whole process really easy that. And as a matter of fact, probably could have had a public hearing on the same day if we needed to. George, do you have any comments or?
Hey, everyone. Sure. So, yeah, my name is George White. I'm with GLMV Architecture. I'm the lead civil site engineer um, on this project. And really just to echo what, what Bruno mentioned, you know, we've been working diligently for quite a while to get this plat together and. Under the, or within the uh, requirements. And so, yeah, what, what you see here is a culmination of several months of work and. I'm hoping to get this uh, secured and approved so that we can continue on with the project.
I move to approve the final plat for the Cloud County Community College Tech Center Edition.
So move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Bellton to approve the final plats, the Cloud County Community College Tech Center Edition. Is there any further discussion?
Can you add the acceptance easements on that too? That's part of the signature in that motion.
Separate motion. It's a separate motion.
Not for the one plat. That's a separate motion for the outside of the plat.
Yes. Yeah.
So in the, in the plat motion, you're accepting the plat and easements dedicated in the plat.
Within the plat.
And then.
Yes.
And that has to be in the motion. And then we have another motion for what's outside the plat.
I'd amend my motion to approve the final plat for the Cloud County Community College Tech Center Edition and all easements. Within the plat. Within the plat, yes.
Correct. Close enough.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the acceptance of easement from Cloud County Community College.
That is the easement outside of the plat. It has to be a separate document. Because it's not included with the dedication within the plat, so that's why we did a separate document, so we got another easement to do with. Any questions?
I move to accept the permanent utility easement from Cloud County Community College.
I move by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to accept the permanent utility easement from Cloud County Community College. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you. We have uh, fine tip markers. I don't know that's the best for them my line copies. We have two paper copies, one my line copy we have to sign. Two sheets and then we'll record that once we get all the signatures. Go from there and then it's official and start getting the building to commence. The signature one we made is for Chuck Lambert, or for Ashley. And she signed it. She has not signed it. As you only say. If you signed it with a different date than tonight, it could remain. If it's signed after tonight, it can't be her name. There you go. So we gotta scribble it out and put Chuck's name in there. Got some crowns.
So we can, we can sign it at the end of the meeting and decide how to handle that.
We've got a resolution two thousand twenty-two, twenty-one forty-six, return of proceeds, five thirty-four West Sixth Street.
This is just a reminder that on a fire damaged house. Uh, it was actually an apartment fourplex. Uh, we were holding insurance proceeds on that. And it's uh, back in a safe condition. It's not, the actual apartment that burns not habitable yet. They're still working on it. They got a permit. But it's all safe and sound, secure. They've got the windows in, they got things secured and they're working on the inside getting the. Uh, the wiring's almost done, a little bit of plumbing to do and then maybe we start sheet rocking and insulating them. But uh, we've done this in the past and it helps get the money back into the hands so they can get. You know, eighteen thousand dollars, that's a pretty good chunk of change. It's a little longer than remodeling, so. In the past, this, we used to hold it till it was completely done inhabitable. But we got challenged on it and our city attorney at the time said as long as it's considered safe. Then money could be returned, so that's kind of what we do, safe and secure. So that's just a reminder that that'll be returned to them shortly.
So return it and they don't finish the project? They don't care.
Well, then it doesn't, well, if they abandon the building permit for more than six months, then they have to get a new building permit. At that point, there may be new rules in place, new codes, new whatever, so that could cost them. But I guarantee you on an income property like that, there's always to get that thing occupied. And they asked me about it a couple of weeks ago and I went up or maybe a month ago. I went and looked at it and I gave them a list of things that you have, I said, you gotta get this done. We can't have it. Of course, somebody can just walk in, you know, because the windows. Were not boarded up right or whatever. So they got all the windows in, got it secured and like I said, they're, they got all the fire damage out of there and. Reinforcement where they need, but I've been working with them for quite a while. The owners of this one have. I think they got a four open building permit right now on, on rental properties that they work on.
So you're confident.
I trust worthy of this, that they will be. Yeah, that is one consider, I could, I could just, you know, be worried about that, but. When you see where the project's at, they'll, they'll be working on it, getting ready.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one forty-six.
Move by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Bellton to approve resolution twenty twenty-two, twenty-one forty-six, return of proceeds. Five thirty-four West Sixth Street. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-two, thirty-one ninety-five Airport Park.
As stated in the memo, uh, this was last updated in twenty eighteen. At that time, we tried out the long-term parking. Um, because we had so many requests for it and it really went over well. Um, so one of the things I'd like to change is to allow for four spaces. That's still, we're very rarely full. Um, we're busy most of the time, but we're very rarely full, so um. I think if we had four, we could keep those rented out, however you want to say it, quite often. Several police officers who do patrol out there, um, did mention that a lot of them are coming in without. Current tags and that kind of thing, and so I put that in just to give them a little bit more room to, to talk to people about that. And I actually told someone last week who was staying out there that he did not have current plates, so he was gonna get that taken care of. And D, about possible illegal activity, obviously a lot of times it's maybe not something. They're proving at that point, but they have noticed some things in the past and they just wanted a little bit more of something that said that they could go ahead and ask someone to move on. Trying to think, a lot of it is just, I didn't really like the word trailer. I mean, what does trailer mean? Eric can go out there with his horse trailer for days. I'm usually looking for a place to park it. Um, as you can see by what I put in about the income, we do get quite a bit off the long term. In fact, I had. That gentleman I was talking about has been staying out there three weeks or so and he's with S Val. I don't know if they got the tech building, but he thought if they got that, he wanted three spaces until this summer maybe. And so they may stay for several months and, and the, the contractors, that's kind of what I like it for. Because they a lot of times don't have anywhere to go and they said right now with the wind farm up at Belleville, most everything is full.
They've talked about trying to come down, I've, people told me they're gonna try to come down and find places to park here because they, I mean, people have put up. Hookups and stuff like that up there and there's still many space left.
Yeah. And that's probably mainly it. We just allowed the tent campers a little bit. As I stated, a lot of time. People who come in with tents or on bicycles, um. They stay a long time. We had, we had one guy, I can't remember if he was in a tent or a really old camper. And he basically set up a flea market and had stuff everywhere and was selling things. And so um, that kind of thing again, we need to ask people to move along if they do that. Cause we had a lot of complaints about the people that were staying out there at the time. But we do have at least one officer and then a, a part-timer that goes out there and checks really regularly and makes sure that. People are abiding by everything and everything seems to be running pretty good out there.
So do you charge the long-term or it's a certain fee or is it?
Uh, the long-term, we had been doing a hundred dollars a week and a lot of people tell us that that was really cheap.
Oh, yeah.
And so I did check around. I, last week I told them to go ahead and make it one twenty-five. I checked around, Salina is. I checked a fifth wheel with eight, that's eighteen foot fifth wheel and it's forty-six seventy a night. Um, Belleville, Rocky Pond, twenty dollars a night, Milford's twenty-five. Um, Minneapolis was ten, but most of them don't seem to have hookups, so one twenty-fives, I mean, we've. We've had a lot of people say that's still really reasonable. So they get, most hookups, they don't have cable, they don't have sewer, they do have to move to dump, but. They, we get a lot of comments. People love parking out there and we have the same people come. But they, we get a lot of comments. People love parking out there and we have the same people come year after year. The reason I wanted to put in about stay more than three times a year, it's going to be hard to check that. But you know, we had somebody here about three weeks ago. He would stay for five days, then move to Walmart for two days, then come back and stay for five days, then move back to Walmart. And we knew he was doing it because he told us he was doing it. And they also noticed he was coming and going, but usually coming back to the same spot. And so we did mention, you know, he was kind of living there was what he was doing. So we mentioned he couldn't do that. And um, he was able to move along, but that's kind of why that's in there. It will be hard to like, you know, check it, but we can at least enforce it. We noticed they're doing something like that. A lot of times they feel like if they move from another spot, that starts the count over. Most people pay something, um, but some don't. So.
But we need to collect.
Can we get a, a long-term camping permit? If, if we know that they, they do pay.
Yeah.
But if they're just there for one or two nights, then that's the donation.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, basically. They have to come down here. Chris is looking into possibly doing something where people can pay by credit card and we feel like we'll get more donations that way. We still would probably make them come down here for the long term because we have to give them a permit that they stay in their window. But a lot of people are very appreciative of the long term. I know that. Love to have a bigger campground, but that's for another decade. If you have any questions, other questions?
Move to approve ordinance twenty-two-two, thirty-one, ninety-five. Second.
So move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Beldon to approve ordinance twenty-two-two, thirty-one, ninety-five. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to housing authority appointment.
When I talked about Kim Weisner last time, I had forgotten that we had another person that was coming up. And that's Devin Davis. He hasn't been on for very long. He um, took Ryan Corn's spot this year. But he's um, he's kind of excited to be on a board. He's never done anything like that before and he really does contribute. And I like having somebody young on there. He feels a little outnumbered with the other women, but we did, I did advertise and we didn't get anyone else. But by law state that we can have five and that's what we have right now with him. Um, so if somebody else comes along that is interested, I'll bring them back. But as of right now, I don't have any in my office, so.
I would move to report Devin Davis to the Housing Authority Board.
Okay.
The move by Commissioner Beldon, second by Commissioner Jackson to reappoint Devin Davis to the Housing Authority Board. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Reports, managers' report.
Mayor Commissioners, prior to report that we did receive the MIH grant from the state along with tax credits. As you recall, we thought we were going to be notified in November and then found out that because we'd applied for tax credits too, it was in December. And I do need to give a lot of credit to Nikki. She was able to turn the tax credit application in about a week. Um, we had thought that we had about a month to prepare that. Turns out we had a week if we wanted to tie it together. And so she did all the research and did submit that. So um, a lot to celebrate there. Also, last time that we visited, we talked about the brown grand roof replacement and you authorized the bid approval for that. And asked me to come back and let you know kind of where that over just coming from. So the bid was a hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifteen. That includes a ten percent contingency. So if all goes well, it, it, it may end up being less than that. We budgeted forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars uh, in CIP insurance, we had to pay fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. And they, we did a little bit more looking into that and insurance is going to pay just for the damaged areas. They didn't intend to pay for the whole roof replacement, just the damaged areas. That's why it was a little bit smaller. So we were short forty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. And how we plan to pay for that is through delay and some CIP projects. So one of the CIP projects that we had was to replace the carpet at City Hall. It's um, original to this building remodel and removed from the old city hall here. So it is well over thirty years old. Um, definitely beyond the life expectancy of normal carpet, but we believe that we can get one more year out of it. We had thirty thousand budgeted there. We also had a project listed to replace some doors at the city shop for ten thousand. And this was an item that was put on by our previous public works director. So uh, the guys decided, let's do a little bit more research. Delay that one more year and figure out exactly which doors we're replacing and make sure that that project is still needed and refine that scope a little bit. Um, another area, there was five hundred and ninety-five dollars left in uh, the sports complex concrete work. And Chris has agreed to delay that work until we get some of the more of the building work done. Uh, there's kind of a, a vision, a master plan for the sports complex. While working with the college and um, Doian Field. And that includes uh, college working on phases two, three, and four that includes some building. So what, we want to get those buildings done first. A couple of things that are listed on the CIP include uh, updating the press box, adding shade structures, for example. So it makes more sense to get those items done before we place any more concrete. Uh, we did also say that the press box wasn't likely to happen in twenty-twenty-three. So we're going to pull the remaining two thousand ninety-seven dollars from that, that project. We had twenty or twenty-five thousand budgeted there. So that's how we're able to make up that forty-two thousand for this year to go ahead and proceed with the brown grand roof. So we did go ahead and give those to proceed to the contractor to order, order supplies and materials. And he intends to start in March. Any questions on that project?
And the only question I would have, is there anything that can be done that would hopefully minimize uh, damage between now and March before they're able to get started on the roof replacement?
Not once a pro- time, I don't know. We haven't, we haven't really talked about that.
That's fine.
I don't know. And the contractor hadn't suggested anything. So I'm, I'm not sure if there is, other than just kind of stay on top of it and take close attention if you start to see signs of leaks, get up there and repair it.
Anything that we can do, I think, to minimize the native impact would be helpful.
Yes. Any other questions on that? The last thing that I had, I realized that as we're progressing down our agenda and moving things around, I did not present Mayor Hutchinson's remarks. If you don't mind, I'd like to go ahead and do that now. Would that be okay? Maybe come on. Yes. Please.
You get to.
You get.
Mayor Hutchinson, thank you so much for your year of leadership on the commission. We appreciate working with you and enjoy, we'll enjoy continuing with you.
And underneath the brown ground roof, have they signed a contract to do the roofing work with the company?
I need to go back and look at my paperwork with the company.
In their contract, it may say they have to protect from any damage up to the time they finish, once they sign the contract.
I'll have to go back and look at it.
Which would give you some leverage.
Staff reports.
I could comment on the shortage of RV spaces. We made a rule quite a while ago in manufactured. Housing subdivision in our, in our zoning, we have a temporary use permit where you can hook up an RV for up to six months. You can for twenty-five buck permit and you can also get an extension for up to six months. It's never been taken advantage of, but always, we did that with, with Kirk Bull at Cloud Core in anticipation of a. The ethanol plant and that's phase three and four of the wind tires that never came to fruition. But they thought there was going to be a big demand for RVs type construction. So we made that rule and it's never been used. If you have an empty lot down in manufacturing subdivision, you can put a little electricity and water and sewer and, and you're making your income for six months. If you own that land. I've told many people that have empty lots down there, you know, for twelve hundred bucks, fifteen hundred bucks back then, now it's probably more. You can get it set up. Utility is pretty easy. But I just wanted to put that information out there because I would assume that there's a, I mean, we have a contractor to come in and buy a house. And then just rent it, let their crew run through it while they're doing a big project like a hospital or something. So. You know, it wouldn't be that difficult to set up a lot for utilities and get you a temporary use permit and. Move to the one next door six months later and then come back. No one forgot Walmart. Hey, I just want to put that out there.
There.
I got, I got something. I rarely have anything exciting to share. This summer's um, Sheila Jackson, who's the property manager at Cloud Village, was approached by um. Losarc Grants, I can't remember the name of it, something in Springfield, Missouri. And they are loans, they're the grants to the Federal Home Loan Bank out of Topeka. And she did a bunch of checking um, with USDA and all those to make sure that it was legit. And so we needed, we had to get this done quickly. So we had to call a special meeting, approve two thousand dollars to pay this woman to write this grant. Um, we thought it was going to go badly because she died right before it got. Right before it got submitted, but they, um, I think she was the owner even, but the, another person took it over, got it submitted and um. So anyway, we were told it could be up to so much per apartment. There's thirty-two apartments. It came out to like six hundred thousand dollars. We were hoping for something. So she was notified that we got nine hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. And there is no matching funds for this grant. Their fee comes out of it, which is a hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred, leaves eight hundred and forty-three thousand dollars and two hundred dollars. And so we can use it for um, we've been dinged on the, the concrete work for years. It's, there's, it's trip hazards. So we can do all of the sidewalks. And there's a parking lot that we'd like to put in towards the back so that the people, if they're elderly or have trouble walking, don't need to park in front and walk clear to the back. And they've been asking for a parking lot for a long time. It'll do. Renovation of entire apartments. We do have some apartments, apartments that still have the nineteen seventy-eight or nine appliances. And so we can do all of that. And we have two years to use it. And there were thirty-seven applications and fifteen were awarded. Must just be, it looked like they were from Kansas, Oklahoma, Missouri, Nebraska, and Indiana. But it looked like to me, when she showed me who got them, that we were the only housing authority. And one of the top ones um, of the money that was received. So.
That's wonderful.
Yeah. That's great. So she looked at a lot of work.
It started must have lined right that time, huh?
Yeah. So it'll be exciting to use. I'm sure we won't have any troubles.
I just wonder if we really want to risk replacing nineteen seventies appliances.
Yeah. They probably last longer, but I mean, they're yellow, they're green.
Well, they're terrible.
They're still running.
The tubs in the showers. Yeah. So the place should be back.
Good.
Fully in.
Congratulations.
And thank you.
Yes. I wanted her to come tonight, but she's having the Christmas party out there. So.
Any other staff reports? Move on to Commissioner Thomas. Marsha?
Um, I got a text from a ghost of Commissioner Pass who let me know that it's very slick outside right now. So even in the twenty-five minutes.
I've been running several.
So FYI, when you're walking out.
Um, a question that came up the other day and it's something I've thought about. I think we've kind of discussed it in the past. Probably just, I, I, as we're moving forward with investing in the housing of our community, which I think is a really exciting opportunity. Um, I wonder what in this, I don't know if this is a question for Amy, if this is a question for Justin. In talking the other day with someone, I'm concerned with the condition of some of our rentals. I've had some clients that I work with that talk about the concern they have of their housing. Um, they're, they're nervous about making concerns. Uh, they don't want to get kicked out. I don't know if there'd be a way, so with, with the fire department, right, there's, there's a way that you can go into a business to basically like a certificate of occupancy, right? Um, is there, is there any grounds that we could have that for non-owner occupied residences?
No.
I can speak to that.
One time Bruno and I got a, what was that? A, a, the search warrant that we were able to get, but.
Administrative search, yeah. But you have to be invited in by a legal occupant of that building. So if I get, I, I deal with this on a regular basis. I get a call from somebody that's renting a place and they don't like what the landlord was doing, they're not fixing something or whatever. So you set up an appointment. First thing you have to do is confirm that they have, they're the legal occupant of that deal because you can't deal with somebody else. And sometimes you have to make them prove they got a lease agreement or something, but then you go in there and look it over and then. What a lot of communities do, and we haven't got this aggressive, but what a lot of communities do, if you get that call. The hammer's coming down. Everything in that apartment's getting fixed and up to code and smoke detectors, egress windows, all of it. We don't get that aggressive. When I go in, I address their concerns and anything major I see, I send a letter. But the, the warning I always give the renter is if I go in there, you could be looking for a place to live tomorrow. Although the state law says the owner, the landlord has to provide a place. If this, if the place isn't considered occupiable, then I have to provide a place either in a hotel or another equally qualified rental that I may own while I fix that place up. I usually start out with a letter to the landlord. And then from there, it can go a myriad of ways. But usually it comes down to either the problem gets fixed or the renters end up moving somewhere else. And then you don't know what's going on in that house after that. And then six months later, all of a sudden there's more renters. So. We have, we could do a rental license. We've talked about that at Nazim where you can have every couple of years, the city comes in, chief boss. We've talked that around. You come in, you, you, you have to meet a certain minimum list. I do rental inspections for the city of Glasgow. I'm contracted with the city of Glasgow. And I run down there every time they have a new round come on the market and they've got a small list. And I go through that list and whatever's not there, I write up and they can't legally rent that out until that list is corrected. And I don't enforce it, but I double check. So. There's a, there's ways you can address that and it is a problem in, in some areas. And some of it is to blame on the landlord and some of it is to blame on the.
Sure.
In some cases. I mean, it, it's, it depends. I've done it enough. You go in and then they're complaining. Some people just tear places up. They turn you into landlord, but some people want at least a decent place to live that they can barely afford. And landlords won't even accommodate them with a, you know, fixing a light switch or something, you know? So I gotta get in there and get involved and write a threatening letter. And then if that, that we don't get any resolve, then we get an administrative search warrant and go in there. Just, and then, and then that's, I hate to say it like this, but that's when you rehab it. When it comes to that, then you go in there and you just start threatening. And like I told, sometime me and Eric have gone into the same building and they're getting there. But I was taught years ago, you're getting your special inspection because you got two certified guys coming in, making sure everything's perfect. But that is kind of sarcastic, to be honest, but. I guess that, that is a problem that I think grows. And it's something I deal with on a regular basis and I wish there was a cut and dried way, but you've got certain personalities that. Some landlords want their places nice and they only rented certain fine bill. So no care.
You also have the Landlord Tenant Act, which are the laws that protect both the landlords and the tenants. Um, I refer quite a few people to that. It's actually pretty easy, pretty user-friendly to read and also accessible online. And there are certain protections. Uh, most of the time it's tenants that will come, you know, that in the past I've said I have an issue, I have this issue. Uh, there are certain protections in there for them as well, in the event that they would report something or there's something wrong. Uh, there are certain protections in there for them as well, in the event that they would report something or there's something wrong. I don't think a lot of people are aware of it or utilize it like they should because out of fear of that. But what a lot of people don't understand too is, is that there's a lot of laws that, you know, if I report to you that. The, the house that you, you know, rented to me is dangerous and you kick me out, well, you could be staring down, you know, uh, some issues with the state or even with the federal government. When it comes to fair housing and stuff like that, you can't just kick me out because I complained about that. So there are some laws that protect. Folks against that. It's hard uh, because a lot of these folks, you know, they don't have a lot of options. So they won't say anything and they will allow that treatment to continue to take place.
Oftentimes they're very nervous about it too.
Sure.
Yeah. And I, speaking of that, I do have copies of that landlord tenant act. I actually talked to the ladies in Pika because uh, you can buy like thirty-five, forty, fifty copies from them, but. They allow you to copy that. So I just took the staple right online and I copied it, I scanned it, I sent it email. Now you can get it online. But that helps a lot. I, it, it helps. Ignorant renters because they go into a situation. They may not know, you know, and get, get bamboozled.
If nothing else, then we can just. Add. Make sure that we have copies of that available in the city office. Maybe we can share that information in different ways to help provide access to that information, if nothing else, that. Give people an opportunity to know that there's some advocates that. It could do something if they chose to and that there'd be some protections with that.
I have had some success with just like you say, giving that information out because I've had renters come to me later and say, you know. I use that information the next time I rent from this landlord and it really helped and it made it good a lot better because they just don't know it sometimes.
If nothing else, equipped with the, the information that we have that might start.
But it is a problem. I mean, it's, and it's a problem in every community, really.
Absolutely. But I think with, with all the efforts that we're going to have to invest in our community and all that we've done to invest in our community, it's, it's disheartening to see that. There are those that are just leeching on the community and taking advantage of those that are not really able to advocate for themselves, so.
So if Glasgow has a list. Is it not something we could do before we allow the rent?
I, I think that you discussed that they took weather. I'll have to look. And I Googled it and it says that was rebuilt. And so I believe their.
Glasgow's?
Yeah.
Oh, well, maybe that's why they haven't called me in about five months.
Yeah, and I believe, I believe, we might want to inspect, I believe Kansas rebuilt that law that allows uh, there to be a. An inspection on rental properties. All we can do is the exterior. You cannot go interior like we do businesses.
Okay. Well, let's see. That, it, it's not something that we need to solve.
No, that's, that law, that was Manhattan. That, you're invited in because that's why.
If you're invited, yes.
You could still rehab it if you're inviting you.
Invite, yes.
Yes.
Invite, yeah.
It'll be exciting to see what opportunities we have to address this, what that means we have.
That's what I've been trying to do for twenty years.
Good.
And I think we've done, made a little progress anyway with the blight. I know. Taken down a hundred houses, you know? Two thousand and seven.
Yep. All right. Would entertain a motion for adjournment? Move by Commissioner Hudson, second by Commissioner Wentz to adjourn. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Drive safe.
Sign the documents, we're gonna have to roll, which is.